The public can also livestream the meeting on our website and our YouTube channel. As always, the meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Thank you. Oh, and our technician this evening is Cedric. Thank you, Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Chloe, and thank you Cedric for having me on this evening. Before I do the roll call, I did want to acknowledge this because we have a new council member this evening, Councilmember Brown. So I just wanted to congratulate her on her ascendancy to the Capetola City Council and other aspects of the line. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Good use to call you Councilmember Brown. So with that, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I'm here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here. Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Brown if she'll lead us in the process.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have any additions to the reasons for you to attend this evening?
Doc has no changes to tonight's agenda.
Okay, and the next item, I see that we have one presentation tonight, the introductory of the Capetola City Manager Department Staff Member, Lois Ossimy-Ci. I hope I said that correctly, my apologies. And the Recreation Division Staff Member, Jesse Leva. They have a presentation.
Yes, Mayor Story, I'll introduce our new Deputy City Clerk. Louis comes to us with lots of relevant experience, most recently working for the City of San Jose in their Clerks Department. He's been our Deputy City Clerk since December last year, and we're all just thrilled to have him. And I believe he's here to just say a couple words, and I think some of you on council have met him in the office. So we wanted to formally introduce him this evening. Thank you.
Yeah. Welcome, Louis. You have the...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thanks, Chloe, for that introduction. And thank you for the opportunity to be introduced to you formally. I have met with a few previously, but not everybody. I've been working with this city enough for the last several months, like Chloe said. I would like the opportunity to work after when I saw the job posting, I knew I had it. When I read the job posting and the job description, I knew I was confident that I had the skills, the attitude, the qualities and the qualifications. Needed to excel in the role, and I needed to get some kind of life and work balance, and there's been a tremendous opportunity to work in this environment. And then I just wanted to say thank you very much, Council, for having me around, and I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you, Louis, and welcome to Capetola and becoming a member of the Capetola City Staff. And we look forward to working with you and seeing you around City Hall.
Yeah.
So we have another staff member, presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Story, Councilmembers. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Jesse Leva, who is a native of Modesto, California, and holds degrees from CSU Stanislaw, San Jose University, and Arizona State University. He received his commission as an officer in the United States Air Force and was stationed part-time at Los Matos Airfield. Jesse has served as a music conductor and teacher at public school as well as higher education. And additionally, he has served the City of Santa Cruz as the mail carrier. Jesse currently lives in Santa Cruz with his wife Lori and their dog, Diego. We, as well as he, is excited that he is joining the Capetola staff as our new Recreation Coordinator that will oversee our classes program promotions as well as the community center and hopes to enrich the lives of our community. So I'd like to introduce Jesse Leva to the council.
Yeah, welcome, Jesse. Did you want to say a few words, Jesse?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers, and Nikki for the introduction. I moved to the area about a year and a half ago, and when I saw this job posting, I really was excited about it, to get a chance to really become a part of the community and serve the community in Capetola. My wife and I go to church every Sunday to Naptas and then head down to Capetola to spend our Sunday afternoons out there, whether it's dining in the area or recently taking surfing lessons, that's what we've gotten into as well. So we're just really excited to become a part of the community and serve the community of Capetola. So I'm just really excited about being a part of the team that Nikki has put together.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Jesse, and welcome to Capetola and being a member of the Capetola City Staff. It sounds like you have a broad range of skills and experiences, and so I think we're lucky to have both you and Louis as a part of our team. And Jesse, I also want to thank you for your service, and we look forward to working with you and seeing you around City Hall. We'll all get there someday soon, so, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Next, we'll have our close session from our City of hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. We had a close session on the item on the agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Chloe, do we have any additional material?
We did not receive any for this meeting. Thank you.
The next part of our agenda, your total communications, this is an opportunity for members of the public to direct the council. One item that are not on tonight's agenda, and if you would like to speak, you can raise your hand on the Zoom or dial *9 if you want to phone in. Our moderator will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to speak. You can also send an email to publiccomment@capetola.ca.us, and you know, we'll do that throughout the City of Minutes. Larry, so we have Q1, and...
As Mayor Story, we have Linda Smith.
Yes. Hi, Linda.
Hi, Stan. I apparently have too much coffee to fill up. I sound a little breathless, I apologize. But I want to thank you, Mayor Story, and City Councilmembers and City Manager for allowing me to comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, which is outdoor dining in Capetola Village. Staff indicated that an update and opportunity to extend our existing program will come before you on the April 28th agenda, and I look forward to that being a reality and hope to see an extension granted at least through the end of the summer. But what I'm here tonight to request is that in light of the prototype design schedule slip, I'm requesting that council provide some additional guidance to the prototype design effort. I was unable to attend but was able to watch the YouTube video of the April 7th Planning Commission meeting that reviewed the draft prototype design for the street dining deck previously called Parklet's in Capetola Village. I was encouraged by the amount of effort and attention paid by staff and consultants in formulating a design that will complement the existing street skates, assure consistency with the various venues, and be an easy and cost-effective implementation for the restaurant owners. Unfortunately, I was discouraged by the specificity of materials and design at the detail level that were presented. It seems that the prototype design is targeted to contain a list of specific tables, chairs, and even plants that applicants will have to select from, most of a very modern style. Furnishings are part of a specific restaurant branding and image, and using the prototype design is significantly incentivized through the permitting requirements established in the ordinance. Not using the prototype design may be cost and time prohibitive, so it needs to be right. Much effort seems to be being spent on the styling of furnishings and railings, while there are many sourcing and site-specific issues yet to be tackled. Although suggesting low-maintenance plants is helpful, I submit that the prototype design should not include a full menu of acceptable tables, chairs, string lines, and specific umbrellas. Geaters and other accessories for inclement weather were absent from the draft. These details will take time to address, and until a baseline is established for construction costs, which sites are actually going to participate cannot be confirmed. I ask that you encourage an approach that would identify dominant design elements that would set a high standard for the Capetola design, such as planters and decking, but allow existing and/or applicant-selected furnishings, tables and chairs, podiums and service stations, possibly even railings, heaters, umbrellas, and other accessories for inclement weather, to be used without violating the prototype design for permit and installation purposes. A list of prohibitive materials could also be included. This would minimize expenses for the restaurants and accelerate installation of beautiful street dining decks in the village. If it is your will that a menu of specific furnishings be included in the prototype design, I ask you to consider directing the prototype design team to include a phased implementation approach, allowing staff approval of off-list furnishings such as less modern designs without classifying the application as full custom and requiring planning commission review. As stated in December, conversion to the approved prototype design quickly is the goal. It's critical that the prototype design be acceptable and cost-effective to the applicant. Therefore, limiting the scope of specificity, establishing a phased implementation approach within the definition of the prototype design, and communicating cost expectations to potential applicants will bring beautiful street dining decks to Capetola faster. Thank you for considering my comments. I know you can't discuss this tonight, but I really thank you for listening. I truly believe this issue is critical to the recovery of Capetola Village's economic vitality. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that wish to direct the council recruitment?
Mayor Story, I do not see any attendees, and I do not have any emails on the topic.
Okay, well then, let's move on now to staff and City Council comments. I'll ask first if the staff have any comments, and then I'll get to you, Josh.
We have one comment this evening from Director Hurley.
Good evening, Mayor Story and Council. On the same subject, I wanted to update you on our outdoor dining ordinance. We are hoping to be on the April agenda for the Coastal Commission, and due to two outstanding items with the Coastal Commission that we're trying to work through at the staff level, we did not make it on the April agenda. We're continuing to work with their staff, and we'll be bringing you an update of your next meeting on April 28th. So we'll have an update for you on April 28th, and we're also monitoring outdoor dining in the village to bring you more data on the usage, and look forward to that conversation then. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Josh, I think you had your... Oh, it's before I move on. Any other staff that commented?
That does it for us this evening.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Go ahead, the councilmember, Josh, do you have your end up first?
Yes, I did, and I'd just like to call out to planning, and I was working on an issue dealing with a recent approval on prospects, and I'd like to compliment planning and their response to various issues there and engagement with interested parties, and so I'd just like to point that out again. I think our staff and planning have done a great job, and so when something comes up like this, I'd like to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor Story. I have a couple of things I just wanted to update council and our community members about. I was just recently appointed by Mayor's Coalition and by the board members of Lasko as their current vice chair. Also, I'm a member of the Policy Board for 3CE, and I wanted to let everyone know that they have a... We have just announced several incentive programs for e-bikes and a few, and for green cars, what are they called, rechargeable cars. There's a lot of funding out there that our community members can submit for through 3CE. In addition, I'm a jurisdictional member for the Youth Action Network. This is an organization that our City of Capetola supports and is a part of. It's also known as YAN, and they are currently working... I just met with the Police Department on some concerns about our youth hanging out down in Capetola Village, and they're working in partnership with them on creative ways of engaging youth in being better community members. Also, I'm a member of the Children's Network, and we... I am just been appointed as a third chair, and we are working on an action-awareness two-year strategic plan that we'll be presenting to the Board of Supervisors. And again, these are all jurisdictional appointments. And then lastly, our City Manager didn't share out yet, but that staff has submitted another request for an earmark to Panetta, Congressman Panetta, for funding for our work. And so, fingers crossed, that this year we might see funding coming in for that again. So if you are out or attending any events and you see him, most certainly say hello and encourage him to support our project at the Capitol of War. Thank you, Mayor Story.
You're welcome. Thank you, and congratulations on being the vice chair of AVAG and chair of the Children's Network.
Not AVAG, Lasko.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you for that correction, and my apologies to Councilmember Peter... Brown. So seeing no other councilmembers with their hands up, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent item will be handled with a single vote unless the councilmember wishes to pull one for further discussion. If the councilmember wishes to pull a consent item, agenda item? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion by Councilmember Brown is dead second.
I can second that.
Yeah, that's seconded by Vice Mayor Kaiser, and I'll ask for a roll call, too.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the general government, public hearing portion of our agenda, and the first five minutes, A, which is a report on the Community Grants Program Review. The recommended action is just to receive the report and to provide direction. So we have a staff report on this.
Good evening, Mayor Story, Councilmembers. Tonight, on this item, we'll be receiving a presentation on the second phase of the review of the Capetola Community Grants Program. Tonight, the presentation will be given by Nicole Young and Nicole En... So I'd like to just allow them to move forward.
Hey, thank you, Larry, and thank you, Mayor Story, and councilmembers. Great to see everyone's evening. I'm going to share my screen so you can see... We're all seeing this slide. And so, again, I'm Nicole Young of Ossimo Solutions Consulting, and I am joined this evening by my colleague, Nicole Lesn, of Coal Communications. And we work collaboratively on a number of projects for nonprofits and public agencies, including this current phase of Capetola's Community Grants Program, or CGP, review. So tonight, we'd like to share with you some of the work that we've been doing. We were able to talk with several of you leading up to this evening's meeting, so hopefully some of us sound familiar. But we also have some recommendations to share with you and see what you think of those. So we are, as Larry mentioned, basically continuing work that we started a couple years ago now, so we're calling this Phase Two of the project, that really is building on the prior review and report for the city that we completed in 2020, basically right before the pandemic. And in that report, we had proposed an array of options for including the community grants program. Now, again, we're based on a process where we interviewed several of you, looked at some data information about your current grantees, and proposed some ideas about how to move forward. At that time, the council had agreed to take incremental steps to improve the community grants program over the course of one to two years, and then COVID happened, and everything got paused. So now, here we are, and we're ready to resume this work and want to provide you with some updated options for improving and adapting the community grant funding process. And so in this current phase, we have prepared what we call a Capetola Community Profile using city-level data from public sources. We reviewed and summarized some lessons, some insights from a series of dialogues that we held with local and regional funders and community-based organizations. And that happened as part of the process of developing the core investment requests proposals that the county and city of Santa Cruz are in the midst of administering right now. And as many of you know, we interviewed almost all of you, the councilmembers, to hear your reactions to the data in the community profile. We wanted to be able to understand how you thought about community grants and how that funding contributes to health and wellbeing in Capetola, and hear your current thinking about the ideal community grant process. So again, tonight, we're going to share some insights from these activities, the little drafts that are writing principles, and recommendations that reflect the findings and feedback from both Phase One and Two of this project. We know that most of you reviewed the community profile that we prepared prior to our interviews with you, and if not, we hope that you've had a chance to review them more fully in the council meeting packet before today's meeting, since we won't have the time to review them in depth today. And the profile contains data that we were able to locate for the City of Capetola or the 95010 zip code, and then it's organized by the Core Conditions for Health and Wellbeing, which is a key element of the collective of results and evidence-based or core investments framework. And the concept of the Core Conditions has provided some language that helps us build a shared understanding of what it takes to create equitable health and wellbeing for everyone in our county at all stages of life. And several local funders, service providers, collaboratives, and initiatives are aligning their priorities and work with the Core Conditions, and that includes the county and city of Santa Cruz, as Nicole just mentioned, with the core RFP process, as well as First Five Santa Cruz County Strategic Plan, and several United Way initiatives. So in many ways, this concept of the Core Conditions for Health and Wellbeing can be useful for planning, for funding, for program development, and evaluation. So from reviewing the profile, you'll know that it includes some demographic data and a handful of data for each of those eight Core Conditions that you saw on the previous slide. On the last page of the profile, data sources are provided in case you want to see where the data came from or explore further. We just want to acknowledge that the limitations of the community profile include the fact that not all the data that the council or community may want to see are already available at the city or zip code level, because some of the data are still only available county-wide. And this is often the case with this type of data. Some of the data have a time lag. They might be a couple years or more old, depending on how frequently they're collected by the original source for the data and how long it takes to clean and verify the data before it shows up on a source like Data Share, which we use extensively for this. So the data may not fully reflect the impact of something recent like COVID at this time, but we thought the major patterns and trends that you can see in the profile still seem relevant for this purpose, and we hope they'll be meaningful to all of you as a conversation starter within the council and also perhaps form the basis for future updates as well. And although we don't have time to review specific data points today, we did want to share some of the comments and insights that we heard during the interviews with you so that you can react and hear those. In general, the councilmembers who were interviewed appreciated that the community profile was in place and being able to see the data organized in this way by the Core Conditions, and they felt it was helpful to see and know data in terms of comparisons to other cities or jurisdictions and the countywide data as well. In some cases, the data affirmed what you all thought you knew, and in other cases, they filled in some gaps or raised new questions. So we heard comments such as, "I didn't realize this before," for example, that 40% of older adults in Capetola have a disability, and that rate is higher than the countywide percentage of 29%. Or that the annual cost of infant and toddler care can sometimes exceed tuition at a UC campus. We also heard comments that the data were either lower than some of you might have expected, like the 34% of residents with a bachelor's degree or higher, which is the second lowest percentage in the county, or statistics about median household income, or the AARP livability score. And others, of course, were higher than expected, like the 28% of children and youth who live in families with incomes below the federal poverty level. That is the highest in the county. The councilmember's key takeaways from the profile are probably best summarized by the quote you see here, "Those who want to live here can't; those who can afford to live here don't." The profile data also affirm how many of these indicators are related to one another or interconnected, like the Core Conditions. So for example, employment and economic security are tied to access, affordability of childcare, the stability and affordability of housing, physical and mental health. All of these can affect the ability to work, the feeling of connection to community, and vice versa. And you also told us about some data that you wish were available or would have liked to have seen in the profile, such as more information about adolescent and young adult age groups, especially whether they plan to stay in Capetola and what might make some want to stay, some civic engagement measures, particularly connection to local government, participation in volunteer activities, and some social capital measures that we think of as elements of community connectedness. There was also interest in data about access to counseling and mental health services, especially in the wake of the stresses of the last two years. And then data that we just didn't have a chance to compile for this profile but might still be available in more detail, like the nature of service calls to the Capetola Police Department, or other data that are held by city departments. The effects of tourism on quality of life was another one that we've mentioned, and the homeless census count, which actually will be available soon because a new report is pending release. And not all of these data are available at all, and some are not available by city or zip code level, so they're less useful for this purpose. But we hope that along with the data from city departments, and the universe of available data changes quickly, so in the future, more of this may be available for a future profile or an update of what you've seen so far. Now, I want to share some of the most salient and relevant lessons and insights that came out of the dialogues with funders and community-based organizations, or CBOs, when the county and city of Santa Cruz were planning the core request and proposal. So Nicole and I facilitated those dialogues for the county and the city, and so during those discussions, we got to hear from other funders that... So then we're also reevaluating our funding processes. They're looking for ways to streamline and simplify their applications and recording requirements.
So basically, you're not alone in this endeavor. And it became clear through these dialogues that simple does not always mean easy. There can be difficulty to operationalize simplicity, especially for government agencies that need to ensure they have a fair, clear, transparent process for allocating public funds, whereas private funds like foundations often have more leeway to create their own rules and make changes. We also heard that other funders are finding the Core Conditions to be a useful framework for organizing their thinking and their strategic priorities, even if they're not pooling their funds with the county and city of Santa Cruz. And we heard this kind of message was clear from both funders and CBOs, to embed equity throughout the funding process from beginning to end, so basically don't treat it as an optional add-on or an afterthought. And then interestingly, you know, we heard several of the CBOs talking about and acknowledging that they know that making funding decisions are hard. They don't envy the positions that elected or government staff are in, and they recognize that not everyone is going to be happy with the decisions. But a lot of them mentioned things that are helpful or that they appreciate from funders, things like clear and frequent communication about expectations and timelines, any changes that are anticipated. They appreciate when there are tools and technical assistance available that can help them understand what funders are asking for or expecting. And so there are tools now available for free or things that Nicole and I offer on an ongoing basis through the Court Institute of Defense. So there's already kind of a library or a base of some of those tools and technical assistance that could be available for Capitola agents. CBOs also talked about appreciating it when they're only asked for information that will actually be used for funding decisions and reports. So kind of the idea of, "Don't ask me a bunch of extraneous questions and information just because you're not quite sure what you actually want." So it's just being really intentional and thoughtful about, "What is the information that you need? What are the questions you need to ask to get that information and make your decision?" And then the last point here, appreciation when the level of detail that's required in grant applications and expectations about recording results are proportional to the amount of funds requested. So small grants, you know, they'll come with like 20 pages for an application or reporting requirements. So you put it in proportion to the amount of funds being requested or granted. So that was some of the themes and lessons from other funders and CBOs. Now moving on to some of the themes that emerged when we did our interviews with all of you, the council members. Again, we appreciated getting the chance to talk with you again. We had done interviews in Phase One of the community programs with you, but again, I felt like so much has happened and changed since then that it seems important to hear current perspectives. And we certainly heard a lot of valuable insights and suggestions that've come around, and we've grouped them into five high-level themes. So the first one is data and results, and really using a situational approach when trying to figure out what's the appropriate level of data and results to expect. We heard, as Nicole mentioned, all of you talked about, you know, just being appreciative of the community profile, some of the data helpful, you know, organized out of Core Conditions, created a useful framework for thinking about community strengths and needs and priorities. Some of you expressed interest in seeing updates periodically. And there's also a general desire from all of you to understand what results will be or have been achieved with community grant funding. And so that led to some good discussions about how much and what kind of data is reasonable to request in applications and reports without adding unnecessary burden for either the CBOs or for city staff. And then that in turn led to a related discussion about the idea of output versus outcomes. Output being kind of units of service, you know, number of services provided, number of people served, versus outcomes being those measurable changes or improvements as a result of the services provided. And here, you know, the general theme was that a nuanced or situational approach is best. We've heard often, you know, it depends on the situation. So for instance, small grants or certain types of services, you know, measuring outputs, the number of services, number of people, seems appropriate for larger grants and/or for programs that provide more complex services to address more complex issues. Outcomes actually are valuable because council members want to know whether community grants have contributed to some of those measurable improvements. The next theme is around setting high-level priorities. And I would say the recurring theme here was using a data-informed approach and also alignment. So there were some suggestions along the lines of, you know, align the community grant funding with the city's budget goals and priorities, or other goals and priorities in other existing city plans and revenue streams, like the CDDC's funding, where the state is actually the master of priorities, or things like the city's housing elements plan or climate action plan. Basically, the theme or the question was, you know, why create another set of priorities and goals and outcomes when you already have a number of plans and goals that could provide some guidance? A related theme is around leveraging opportunities. And so all of you that we were able to talk with had mentioned, you know, willingness to explore opportunities to leverage funding with other funding sources, with other initiatives, even if it meant Capitola wouldn't have full control over the funds or wouldn't know exactly how many Capitola residents benefited. Again, the current theme was, it depends on the situation. But all of you, for instance, examples of how Capitola is already doing this, with things like the opioid settlement fund, contributing to the homeless action partnership, the countywide homeless assistance fund, and talked about how you understood that Capitola's contribution helps improve our housing, to improve health and well-being of the community at large, which includes Capitola. And that may not always be possible to explain exactly how many Capitola residents benefited, you know, given the dollars that you've contributed. Some of you did mention that using community grants do more of that kind of leveraging. You know, it would require some more thorough planning and discussion with other funders, co-funders, because it does often involve sharing or even giving out a sense of control. So you want to make sure you have some, you know, good, solid agreements in place before you enter that kind of agreement. The last two themes had to do with the process. So there were a number of comments about, you know, wanting to ensure a consistent, stable process for community grants, where the line item in the budget for community grants is seen as being as valuable and necessary as any other budget line item. So it's not a question that has to get revisited year after year of whether the community grant program is necessary or good use of city funds. And it's not framed as a zero-sum choice, meaning, you know, if a fund's a community grant, it takes money away from something else. But instead, frame it as a question such as, "How can Capitola contribute to more equitable health and well-being for city residents through community grants as well as other resources, city resources?" And lastly, there was recognition that agencies value community grant funding even if it's a small amount. Many nonprofits weave together funding from multiple local, state, and federal sources. So Capitola's funding is an important piece of that puzzle. But we also heard from you as council members that general desire to balance support for existing grantees that provide services that will always be needed, because they are of basic needs, with opportunities for new applicants, new programs, new projects that are innovative. So the main message that we heard was, you know, we don't want to destabilize nonprofits, but we also don't want to maintain status quo just for the sake of history. And in fact, some of you talked about the importance of reevaluating community grants, you know, at the process and community needs and priorities periodically because changes in the process and funding that such as they actually be needed for the benefit of the
So based on everything that you've heard, the community profile, the insights and useful lessons from other funders and community-based organizations, the themes from the council member interviews, we compiled these suggestions for draft guiding principles to help you identify priorities and make decisions about community grant funding. These principles could offer some of the consistency that Nicole referred to just now across grant cycles while still leaving some room for change and flexibility. And they all reflect some type of balancing act. So balancing unmet needs with existing needs, aligning with some of the other plans and processes Nicole just described, while also being able to address emerging issues that we don't know yet, focusing on Capitola residents while also recognizing that those geographic boundaries are fluid for individuals and families, and all the other features that are implicit in being stewards of these funds while also trying not to excessively burden grantees or information requests or staff with reviewing and evaluating the information that you do collect from grantees.
So here are our recommendations. We have five of them for you to consider, which are, again, based on all the findings and feedback from both phases of this review. So I'll briefly describe each one, and then we have a few examples of what that could look like. And then after our review, these will open up for any questions you have. So our first recommendation is to identify three or four priority areas of funds that are informed, and that collection is informed by data about overall needs and specific populations, much like the data in the community profile. And it's aligned with, again, city goals and commitments and organized by the Core Conditions for Health and Well-Being. The next recommendation is to allocate an equal percentage of community grant funding across those three to four specific priorities. So for example, 25% to each priority area if you were to select four priorities. And we recommend doing that unless or until a more thorough prioritization process that has ample opportunities for community engagement can occur. And the next recommendation is to consider awarding multi-year grants that align with other local funding cycles. So the multi-year increases stability and predictability for the CBOs. It enhances, you know, by aligning with other local funding cycles, enhances the potential for leveraging and collaborating with other funders. And overall, it just reduces the workload for both grantees and staff doing it, you know, on a less frequent cycle. The next recommendation is to consider using GuideStar profiles and the candid seals of transparency as your community grant application books. The content, a bit more in a moment, but if you're not familiar with GuideStar, it's an online searchable nationwide directory of nonprofits that other funders and donors often use when they're looking for information on a nonprofit mission, their programs, their people, their leadership, and financial health. So any nonprofit can create a profile for free, and the more information they provide, the higher the seal of transparency they can earn. It's kind of like a Better Business Bureau for nonprofits. So you can always supplement the GuideStar profile with additional Capitola-specific questions to help you make decisions about community grants. But again, this strategy will provide the information you need to make informed funding decisions while significantly reducing, again, the workload for both CBOs and city staff because they're using existing information that nonprofits can have already. And then our last recommendation is to allocate two to three types of community grants with varying award amounts and expectations that are proportional to the amount of funding you're requesting. I share a few examples of what some of these recommendations could look like, starting with the priorities and alignment. So in this example, we're showing four priority areas using the Core Condition names, health and wellness, life on learning and education, community connectedness, and stable affordable housing and shelter. And under those, we've named some areas of community need that we heard council members identify during the interviews. And so their thoughts, their feedback, their statements, you know, were partly informed by the data in the community profile, as well as other data they were aware of, and their interactions with community members. And then with the limited knowledge we have, we included some examples of how those areas that the community needs might align with the city's budget principles, other plans, existing efforts, or other city investments. And so we know this is incomplete analysis, and we're not supposing that these should be the four priority areas. But if you decide to adopt this particular recommendation about selecting three to four, you know, creating that for identified alignment, this type of matrix can provide a starting place to do that more thorough analysis. In this example here, it's about the seals of transparency. We wanted to show you the types of information that nonprofits can provide in their GuideStar profiles and show you how the more information is provided, the higher the seal of transparency that can be earned. And basically, as you see, it's a first level bronze. The minimum amount of information that a nonprofit needs to provide to get a bronze seal is basically an agency overview, contact information, mission statement, the subjects or topic areas they cover, target populations they serve, and information about their agency leaders. So pretty standard information and pretty basic, pretty minimal. And to earn a silver seal, an organization would have to provide everything in the bronze level and provide more information about their programs, the program names, the descriptions, the geographic areas that it serves. And then each kind of level you go up, you have to provide everything in the previous level plus more. And if you were to look on GuideStar, you might see some organizations that actually have a bronze seal, but you still see things like their financials or information about their board. And you might wonder, "Well, why don't they have a gold seal?" And it's because there's something at the silver level that they have kind of provided or decided to include. So, you know, we have a number of nonprofits in Santa Cruz County that already have a seal. There are also my love, 31 nonprofits with a bronze seal, 41 have a silver, 20 have a gold, and 23 nonprofits have a platinum seal. And there are a number of nonprofits that don't have a seal yet, but they could. And some nonprofits don't have a GuideStar profile at all, but again, they could. And there's a lot of TA, technical assistance, available through Candid, that's basically like the arm of GuideStar that handles all the seals of transparency. And there are times when we've offered some of that kind of learning and technical support as part of the Court Institute to help nonprofits fill out their profiles because it could be benefits to them outside of any specific grant process. And so what does this tell us that many nonprofits, including some that you currently fund, already, may already have profiles that potentially be repurposed as your community grant application? And then here's our last example that we wanted to share in terms of ways to think about types of community grants. So in all of the interviews, you could be recognized that part of the challenge of the community grant program is that there isn't a one-size-fall approach that will work for all situations. And so our recommendation here is to allocate two to three types of grants to resolve that conundrum. And so for the purposes of this example, we call these three types of grants, operational, outcome, and impact grants. And we describe a few characteristics, such as grant size or amount of awards, the number of awards you grant, the purpose of the grant, and the application and data or reporting expectations that would then distinguish one type of grant from another. And the overall concept is that the grant expectations would be scaled to reflect the grant size or amount. So you can see that different ranges of grant sizes or awards correspond with each type of grant. So we've included some sample ranges here. You might specify the different minimum and maximum dollar amount, so don't get me hung up on the actual numbers that's in there. The actual number of awards granted, you know, would depend on the amounts you have allocated for community grants. But one way to think of it in this type of model is, you might award more of the small operational grants, fewer of the medium outcome grants, and maybe the least of the larger impact ones. And then each type of grant might serve a different purpose. So the small grant, to support general operating costs. Outcome grants, to support implementation and/or evaluation of programs to directly benefit Capitola residents. An impact grant would be a way for Capitola to co-fund or contribute to broader initiatives that may directly or indirectly benefit Capitola residents. And so being clear about the purpose of each grant will help you set the appropriate expectations about the level of detail required in applications and reports. So for instance, it would make sense to require less detail in both the applications and reports for small grants, and more deal of detail for larger grants. Although you'll see that for the impact grants, if you're co-funding or contributing to a broader initiative that another local funder maybe is administering, we're actually suggesting that you set details of those in private reports that are prepared and submitted to that other funder. And if the work is already being done, it lowers the burden for everyone involved. And so you can see we've also suggested, you know, maybe there's particular And so you can see we've also suggested, you know, maybe there's particular seals of transparency, right, that you might want to think about in terms of the amount of information that's already provided in GuideStar that you could then use with your application. And so that is actually the end of our presentation, and so we'll pause here to see if there are any questions for us.
Yeah, thank you, Nicole. And Nicole, council members have questions? Um, good. Chloe, you have a question?
Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I think that was an accident. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Um, Councilmember Brooke?
Thank you, Mayor Story. Nicole, how are you notifying the local nonprofits to use that GuideStar platform since this is kind of a model you're suggesting we implement?
Well, GuideStar is its own, what it may do a lot of its own kind of marketing and promotion. If Capitola decided to use GuideStar in that way where it would be a function of your grant application, you know, we would use resources that we have, like our four investment email list that we use to send announcements about different events and training and technical assistance opportunities. Like, we would help make that known, like, you know, it's free, it's available, it's easy, it's probably information you already have from all your other grant proposals you prepared. It's a matter of, like, putting it in that website so that you can get your seal.
And is it part of the, like, I'm just trying to think of, like, best practice, right? Would we say to our local or our current list of nonprofits, this is a way we're going to be, you know, distributing the funds? I'm just trying to think of how to get our nonprofits on board with that. Or like, if it goes away, would it happen if that organization doesn't exist or that platform doesn't exist anymore? I'm just trying to think of how to build in something that we're not familiar with, with GuideStar.
I think that in terms of getting nonprofits on board, you know, where I think, you know, if and when the council decides, okay, yes, let's do this, that makes sense, that, you know, it's making use of information that nonprofits are likely to already have, you might need, you know, the plan for, at least, you know, maybe a couple months of, like, making sure that nonprofits know, this is your plan, here's why, and really explain the benefits, right, that it's meant to get things easier, more streamlined for them as well as you as the funder. The platform itself, I mean, GuideStar, I'm trying to think off the top of my head how long it's been around, but it's probably been around longer than, maybe, I guess I've been starting a while, but I don't know if it's quite that old, but it's a longstanding, stable platform. The seals, I think, is maybe a relatively newer piece of the GuideStar platform. But even if that went away for some reason, you could still look at what information is selected in the profile and if organizations have created a profile before, with all that information in there, you could still find ways to purport that or use it as your community grant application.
Okay, I appreciate that, yeah. Especially because we're trying to look at an equitable solution here. And so if GuideStar is a piece that would not allow for that, right, if an agency has been around and just didn't know about it for a long time and doesn't have a platinum, I wouldn't want to see them left out because they didn't use that platform. So I think that would be a discussion for council to have. But you have a hand to my question, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Brooks.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So Nicole, and Nicole was just presented, God, the last name of my mouth, I'm sorry. So in the platinum, there is an issue of, you know, sharing a broader goal than just Capitola, I think. I forget the words that were used in that. So that necessarily brings up to me, you know, with the process here, you know. So potentially, we'd have to work with other cities and parts of the community in Santa Cruz in general for trying to share a broader goal and try to identify that. So do you have any suggestions or how does that been approached? You know, we're not in a vacuum, but we definitely have to reach out to others, or I was just wondering if you could address that with some of the experience that you've had perhaps, or some, maybe in the future, we could talk about how to do that. So that's sort of my general question.
Yeah, you're talking about that impact grant, the kind of the largest size where you might co-fund or contribute to something broader?
Exactly. Yeah, I appreciate, you know, there's a lot more chance to leverage, you know, to combine efforts to fund, you know, and, but necessarily, it would have to be something that has impact, not just in Capitola, the broader community, but we also feel the need, you know, in general in this community to address that. So we don't necessarily work with other groups, you know, in this regard, so I was just wondering what your thoughts on that.
Yeah. There's probably a few different ways, at least a few different ways to approach it. There are, you know, so one approach would be looking first to see, you know, after you've decided what your three or four priority areas are, then looking around the local community and local funders to see, are there already some existing kind of broader initiatives like that that line up with the priorities that Capitola selected that seem like a good fit where you would be saying, oh, we want to be contributing to this larger effort because we believe it benefits the Capitola community, here's our portion of that. And it might be that you grant it directly to an agency that is delivering that program or service, or part of that initiative, or it could be, for instance, the core investment funding process that's, you know, being figured out right now. So that actually is the model that the county and city of Santa Cruz are using, where they are going to co-fund, they're calling it a targeted impact grant, but it's a pretty substantial amount. And the city of Santa Cruz has to face, like, kind of similar decision points, like, how much does they need to know, like, their dollars are going specifically to Santa Cruz residents, right? But really, they're seeing, like, if we invest in something bigger to really get to that kind of, where you're seeing change at a community level, 10,000 at a time, 20,000 at a time, like, that's not going to do it, right? It really needs to be more of a collective collaborative funding effort. So you could look to, you know, are there existing efforts where you could, you know, is it provided a grant that contributes to that? There might be something new that emerges, whether it's, I'm not saying this would be it, but like, kind of like how the opioid settlement dollars become available and it became clear that, oh, instead of Capitola trying to build the capacity to figure out how to administer those services and administer this grant, basically are partnering with the county to lead that work. Nicole, do you have any other thoughts that come to mind in terms of, like, how to approach the large, the impact grant?
Yeah, just, just that, adding to what Nicole Young said, that, you know, this has been grappled with recently. It's not completely simple and straightforward, but it is possible. And it requires, you know, setting aside some of the emphasis on a particular tie between a funding and a result and looking at this broader view of the county and health and well-being countywide. But also, just to the earlier point that Councilmember Brooks raised, these kinds of streamlining of information for multiple purposes, so whether it's for the smaller types of grants or these larger ones that we've just been discussing, part of the benefit accrues to the applicants because they're only providing information once instead of over and over with slightly different formats. But it also accrues to those of you reviewing the applications and the aspirations of grantees because so much effort goes into those, as you know, whether they're large, medium, small, so much effort goes into those descriptions and to compiling information. And so at all of these sizes of requests, there's really an opportunity to use the effort in multiple ways and to not have to just keep recreating that for both staff and applicants. So that's part of the reason that we were drawn to the GuideStar kind of model, or repurposing other applications.
If I could have a follow-up, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Brooks, thank you.
Thank you very much. So in your presentation, joint presentation, it was identified that somewhere, you know, rather surprised at the high cost of childcare, even as opposed to tuition for UC Santa Cruz. And that seems to me as something that in this community, and I think members of our board addressed this in the past, is a very needed aspect. We need to have adequate childcare if parents are going to be able to pursue their careers and also adequate childcare is better beneficial for young women life, at an early age especially. So we have an identified need, would perhaps the way to answer my question is, you know, we feel this is an identified need and then reach out to other communities here like Santa Cruz County or South Valley and say, you know, just have an effort just amongst ourselves to say, okay, this is something we've identified, and is it something you'd like to join with us in terms of funding together, say, working with Cabrillo so that one of their programs would start producing qualified childcare personnel, et cetera. So, you know, it's that reaching out that gets me, and, you know, maybe the core process does that, but, you know, it may be confined to just, you know, in a way that may not be as available to everyone, that's all.
Yeah, if I'm following you, if I'm understanding right, yes, yes, that reaching out, like, if you know, if you've identified a need and you have ideas about where or how to award a, you know, a large impact grant, and you have ideas about partners and what their role may be, yes, you could certainly go that route to reaching out and initiating something. And that can often take a lot of work if you're kind of building those partnerships and that, you know, approach or the program or whatever it is, you know, from scratch. It's kind of a matter of how much capacity you have, right, or how much time or interest you'll have, you know, among your staff and with yourselves to do that kind of reaching out and building versus finding something where there's maybe a structure, an initiative, a something in place that you've been considering something that is already in the works.
Thank you. Are there other questions from Councilmembers on the report? Seeing none, I think I'm going to take this opportunity to check in with the members of the public if there are any. Larry, I don't see any attendees, but could you confirm that we haven't received any phone calls or emails?
Mayor Story, I don't see any attendees on this item, and it doesn't look like we've received any emails.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council, and just to, you know, the recommended actions to receive the report and provide direction, are there maybe some feedback or directions from Nicole and Nicole on the progress of law? Yeah, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. That was, that was an incredibly informative presentation. Thank you so much for all the work that you've put into this. There was a lot of information there. It was really informative, but really also information dense. And I have a hard time thinking that I could process all of our priorities, the seals of transparency, the GuideStar program, you know, all of that within this one meeting. And so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, and maybe this is something that staff could help me work through, for this presentation that you've just provided to us to be sent to each of the council members for us to kind of break down individually, because I think that we're all going to have our own thoughts on what our priorities should be, whether or not this field of transparency GuideStar program should be included, et cetera. And so my thought is, if others on the council would agree, that we could have this presentation sent to us, we could each consider our thoughts on it, and then perhaps this could be brought back to us maybe in May so that we could have a more informed discussion about it. And I don't mean informed in the sense that we didn't get a lot of information just now because we absolutely did. I just personally need a little bit more time to digest this kind of information and consider what I feel would be the most, the best way forward. And so that's, that's my thought about this item. And again, thank you so much to both of the Nikoles. I had interviews with you and seeing the presentation of what you heard from other council members, bringing that in from what you heard from community organizations, from what you heard from, or what you saw in the kind of demographics and the information about our city, it's all incredibly informative and it's almost overwhelming how informative it is, which is the only reason that I ask that perhaps we can have this information to think about personally and then come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brooke?
Thank you, Mayor Story. And thank you to the Nikoles. You know, I love data and I love all of this sort of stuff, and I'm thrilled to have it before us. It's really been a challenge for myself and what I've seen from our council members in the last several years of trying to get to this point of having the data and being able to set these priorities. This is something that Councilmember Brown and I have been tasked with without all of this data and information as of committee members. I'm almost thinking, and maybe this is, you know, if council would oblige, is that, and Councilmember Brown, just an idea, about you and I going back to the table with this information and really organizing it, looking at the data that was presented to us today, setting, picking those priorities, very similar to what we did with the CDDG grants, and presenting that information to council so it offsets that workload. I'd be willing to take that on in, again, using the data, not like we have to make it up, we're not, we're using the tools we now have, allocating those percentages as suggested in the recommendation, and then bringing back that back to full council. So if Councilmember Brown nods in agreement and then the rest of the council is okay with it, maybe that's a way in terms of moving forward. So that, those are just my thoughts. And again, thank you to everyone, and that information was not so shocking, but not so shocking, right, as what we've all been thinking really was occurring in our community.
With Councilmember Brown nodding yes?
Of course. If there's, if I'm able to be on a committee with Councilmember Brooks to kind of look at this information and bring back recommendations to the council while we're all considering these recommendations from the Nikoles, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you. But, you know, maybe before we go to the last thing to create a committee, let me go to Councilmember Frank.
Yeah, you know, my question to Nicole before we went to comments was, you know, basically focused on, you know, what's the possibilities of implementation? And, you know, I was prepared for this second phase of our discussion when I thought that we shouldn't tear up in groups of two, sort of like what Yvette is talking about, not necessarily committees, but that we use those groups of twos. I worked with the Vice Mayor, of course, and as I just pointed out, there was a further effort with Kristen and Nicole and Yvette. So the basic thing here to me is understanding clearly what and Yvette. So the basic thing here to me is understanding clearly what this information is. And, you know, I agree that the information, as Kristen mentioned, there's a lot here, and it's reflective of how much work was put in to prepare the report, which, you know, I fully respect that effort. And it's also up to us to actually understand clearly what's the depth of that information so that we can actually come to some sort of way to implement, which that's sort of, to me, the goal, the end goal. So, you know, I think we should tear up, and I think an adequate amount of time, come back to the board and not to leave Sam stranded because it is, the board is five. I think that in terms of implementation, Sam working with the city manager would be very critical because there's a whole aspect of, you know, how that would work with our budget, there's an idea of line items, et cetera. So, you know, there's some functionality issues there that might be very important. And a lot of us on the House stands very much involved in the nonprofit community for many, many years, in community bridges. So, you know, maybe his wisdom there could actually help us in regards to how we implement some of the things that are being suggested here as to moving forward. So those are my ideas, not necessarily a committee, but that we individually focus together as a group in various ways so that we can come to some ideas how we're going to implement.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Any other comments on council members? Seeing none, I guess I wanted to maybe just reflect on the recommendations that were presented in the staff support and then maybe talk a little bit about the heart of community structure. It is, if that's the campus will to go in that direction. I think the recommendations are overall kind of supportive of, I did have some questions about some of them, and at this stage, kind of unsure how they would work in relationship to our community grant program. And obviously, it's one, the one that I have lived with for many years and familiar with. But just to speak to, one, the first recommendation was about organizing this around the core conditions for health and well-being. And I wasn't quite sure, I mean, I think we eight core conditions, but they seem pretty broad. And I'm not sure about what is underlying within each one of those conditions. And in such a way that it's not on a plan to eliminate somebody that we may want to support in the future. I mean, just for example, when I'm thinking about the disability community, I'm not quite sure where that fits within one of those conditions for health and well-being. I'm sure it does, and it's there somewhere. But I guess I would want to maybe come back and show it in more detail. And thinking in relationship to our past experience with community programs, if there were, where would this one fit? Does it fit into those four conditions? And, you know, my interest is being as flexible and broad as possible for the council and as when it comes to implementation. The second recommendation concerning allocating an equal percentage of the community grant program funds across the priority areas. That's just, I mean, that seems to me, may end up being kind of arbitrary and not giving necessarily a demographic target. We've already identified that we have, you know, the greatest percentage of seniors in the county over the age of 65. And, you know, and according to the census data, the fastest growing population group are those 80 and over. So, and also realizing that we have the highest percentage of children that are within poverty. Seems to me that we would want to not just kind of equalize the community grants, but be able to devise them in a way that, you know, matches the demographics. Or, another way to say it, to me, you know, the recommendations are multi-year grants. I think if there's a break line and otherwise funding for disability and everything, I think there's an excellent criteria, using GuideStar. I'm not familiar with standing still to transfranchise, I don't know about it. But I'm familiar with GuideStar and using that as a checklist for the community programs. I think would facilitate, you know, just reducing some of the bureaucracy in the process. And the last recommendation concerning establishing two or three types of community grants. And, you know, I'm mostly familiar and experienced with direct service grants, where it's kind of, you know, we expect units of services to be delivered to capital residents, and we want to hear about what those were. And I'm just, I'm a little, I'm familiar about how impact grants or outcome grants would, how they would work. I would like to maybe learn more about those if those are going to be a component of what we are going to fund using the community grant program. I know we have other funding, such as the ODO funding, you know, the half funding, which is separate from the community programs that we're participating in. And in a sense, those are maybe impact funding, but it's still a tie to our community grant budget. And I just don't know, and would want to learn more about how impact grants would be utilized for that pool of funding. And I'm not quite sure, we and our staff have the expertise and time to basically assess and monitor and evaluate whether an impact grant has been successful. So I guess those are my reactions to the recommendations concerning. Now, you know, the committee, I think that it would be very helpful for Councilmember Brooks and Councilmember Brown, who were originally part of Bank One, to come back and kind of overlay these recommendations with, and come to some concrete recommendations of how these are implemented with the next phase of our community grant transition. And John, I think it would, having multiple sets of recommendations come back to us, that just seems overwhelming to me. And it could just, you know, kind of diverge us all into, you know, different directions, which may be as hard as the recommendation is. And realizing that any two council members can get together and talk about these items in any event. And I think some of us would, would. But my preference would be to allow Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Brooks to be the formal committee, and they could report back to us. And of course, we would then be able to respond to those recommendations. So just my thoughts on that question. But I see a Councilmember Brown, I'm sure, and I'll call on Bill.
Thank you, Mayor Story. I agree with your thoughts in the idea that regardless of any committee structure, all council members, not all council members, but other council members are free to discuss with each other within the confines of the Brown Act. And I think that it would be a great opportunity come May for us each, regardless of a committee, with Councilmember Brooks and myself, for all of us to take the time to consider this information that's been brought to us, how we would feel would be the best way to move forward. And then if Councilmember Brooks and I can come up with a recommendation, then each council member that has also considered this information could give therapy back then on whether or not they agree with whatever recommendation we might, we might come up with.
Okay. With that, I could, it may be appropriate for us to just, you know, maybe both have an agreement on the committee to work with Nicole and Paul on the next phase of this effort. Oh, is there, my track guy did, do you want to show lead?
Definitely. I will move that as long as Councilmember Brown and Brooks are on board with that. Thank you.
Yes, they are. And is there a second?
Second?
Is Erica there?
Yeah, I'm going to accept Councilmember Bertrand's second. Thank you on that. And also, well, I don't think we need to move the actual report at this time. And, but Chloe, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Hi, Chris.
Councilmember Brooks.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Hi.
Mayor Story.
Hi. The motion has been unanimously, and it was reported to receive. Thank you, Nicole and Nicole. And I hope you've got the next day's direction from us. And we look forward to having you come back, you know, at a May meeting to give us maybe not the conclusion at that point, but the next, I'd say, you know, the next phase. And thank you for helping us tackle that, it is a difficult job, you know, as we certainly realize that. And I think if they all work together, we'll get through it and come out with a good product that we have in mind. So thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to take us on to the next item on the next agenda, which is item 9B, which is to consider a community survey contract and the recommending action is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Gene Gregman and Associates in an amount not to exceed $17,000 for a community survey to help gauge public interest on potential ballot measures for the November election and approve it to the post. I would recommend many of these 21, 22 specials.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Give a second to share my screen. How's that look, Mr. Moderator?
Looks good.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Story. All right. Good evening, everybody. So during this year's goal-setting session, the council identified a goal to evaluate possible ballot measures in anticipation of the November 22 general election. Since that time, staff have been with the Finance Advisory Committee to discuss potential tax measures to consider polling. Based on the facts reviewed, they recommended polling a second home tax. And I'll have more details about that a little bit later on in the presentation. The value of community polling. For those of you who've been on council for a while, you've probably heard me make these statements before, but I really do have, I think it's always wise to poll before putting something on the ballot. It helps inform the decision about whether measures should be placed on the ballot or not, helps identify priorities. For example, whether funding should be devoted towards parks or streets or the beaches or what, the polling helps give you sort of a guide to a statistically relevant way about what voters might think. And then lastly, it really can help avoid putting measures that are unlikely to pass on the ballot. I think having measures fail is a bad outcome for the city. You know, I've heard people in the past argue that it's a relatively low-cost thing to do. Nevertheless, I think the legacy of seeing things not pass suggests to everybody that the city isn't, isn't as aligned with its community as it probably should be. So the proposed contract is for $17,000. He has conducted a number of recent surveys for the city in past years. The survey, we hope, would likely include between 175 and 200 Capitol voters. Mr. Brerigan is on the call, and he can talk more about the challenges of getting those number of voters, which in the past has been a challenge, although I recall last time around when we were polling around the pandemic during the shutdown, it was really easy to get people's answers. I felt then that they were looking for something to do, which was a different experience. So some items that council may want to consider polling. One is the second home tax. This is something that, and where Councilmember Bertrand brought up a while ago. It's a relatively new idea in California. It's been really only implemented, as far as I can tell, in the city of Oakland. I think there was a lot of questions about its legality, a ton, but it has withstood legal challenge, and it really does appear to be a legal tax. The Oakland example applies to homes that are occupied for less than 50 days in a year. The tax is an annual $3,000 to $7,000, depending on whether it's a single-family home or a good unit in a multi-year department. There are exemptions for low-income residents, for houses that are in active construction, for things like that. According to the most recent census, there's 410 units in Capitol that are identified as seasonal recreational or occasional use. And then another 100 units that are classified as other vacant. I don't think all of the other vacant would likely be subject to the tax. I suspect that there are units in there that are going through probate, that are in construction, that would probably be exempt from this tax, although obviously we don't know what this tax would look like, and we haven't written the ordinance yet. So, but that gives you a feeling for the number of units that we're talking about. The rationale behind this tax is pretty clear. It's the notion that, you know, homes that are being used as second homes often are largely sitting vacant and are unavailable as part of the overall housing stock. So this is a way to disincentivize second home ownership. San Francisco, according to media reports, is considering such a tax coming up here in the next, this next election cycle. And in the city of Santa Cruz, there's a community group that I understand is pushing to get this tax on the ballot as well. The fact did recommend this as an item to consider polling. And so that's sort of a summary of the second home tax. Sales taxes, the city has the ability to put on extra sales taxes. They're called district taxes. They often come in quarter, quarter percent increments, but they don't have to. They can come in a half. You can have a half set local district tax. Each quarter cent generates about $1 million a year. One of the challenges behind the sales tax, particularly these district taxes, is that over time, they have not been keeping up with inflation. They've been just about $1 million for the last decade. And the challenge behind that is that it's an ongoing revenue source. Basically, their buying power just goes down a little bit over time. And that's one of the hardest things for local governments to deal with. You know, we can respond to a major recession where we have to cut back, but each year you're sort of having to gently tighten the belt. It gets harder and harder over time. I do think that these district taxes can be a particularly useful tool, the way we're utilizing it now with the work, where it's over a fixed period of time and it's for a specific project. So if there's a specific project that the council wanted to target funding, I think that the limited term sales tax could be worth considering and could be worth polling. And then giving a little bit of feedback, giving a little bit of feedback, staff could poll different sort of voter receptions, dedicating all of the funding to roads, dedicating it to recreation, dedicating it to public safety. We could come up with what different items to consider polling. A utility user tax, you recall that two years ago, we had pretty significant conversations about that. And in fact, we did poll it. The utility users tax, everybody pays on their utility bill, and you can levy the tax on water bills, sewer bills, home bills. The challenge is, is that as opposed to the second home tax and the sales tax, it's only paid by Capitol residents. And in addition, you may remember that the poll results in 2020 suggested it was going to be very hard to get that passed. And my recommendation is that I don't think and, um, my recommendation is that I don't think the economic climate has grown more favorable for something like this to pass, so I don't think that it's very likely that we would, if this is worth polling, um, because I don't think it's very likely that this could be voter support for it. And then, of course, there's other options, uh, we've most recently adjusted our T O T, but council has discretion to poll a T O T change, um, and then there are obviously other terms of taxes we could discuss further. So, uh, the process would be if we authorize this contract tonight, the goal was to bring back the results of the first June meeting, and then in June and July, we would put together an item if we determine we want something, uh, put together an item to go onto the ballot, and our final date to take action on that is August twelfth, but you'll remember we don't have a scheduled meeting that first week in August, so we would need to get it done by July or schedule a special meeting. So with that, the recommendation is to enter into the contract with Gene Bregman and Associates in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars for polling, and to approve the proposed resolution amending the current year budget, and then provide direction to staff around items to consider including in the poll, I will note that Gene Bregman is on the call and available to answer any questions, should councilmembers want to speak with him directly. With that, no real questions.
Thank you, Jamie, other questions from the council members? The, um, Jamie, I had, um, well, councilmember Bertrand, go ahead, you're on you.
Uh, since Gene is available right now, um, so, so we're in an inflationary period right now, and thus it's wondering if he would comment on that and, you know, us considering extra taxes, um, I, I completely understand what our city manager is talking about, you know, we're getting a little bit squeezed as inflation increases our expenses, and so he needs to more revenue, so that's the reality here, and with those two concepts in line, I, I understand you phrase questions and partially is to, um, help the public understand, you know, where we are, and, uh, you know, we're just not asking for taxes for the, the purpose of getting more money, you know, just flat, but because we have challenges, so thus it's wondering if you could try to address those two maybe counter issues, inflationary issues, and, you know, the rising need of city government expenses, which is pretty obvious.
Sure, so I do think that the inflationary issue certainly would make the U T even harder to pass, um, and I suspect could play a role in the sale tax, um, I do think that the second home tax may have a different reception, um, second home tax isn't on people that live in Capitol, you know, it's people that are occupying homes, well, taking homes out of our inventory, if you will, so I do suspect that that may have a slightly different reception, but it is a new concept, and so the question of voter understanding of how that would work is certainly an open question.
I, I think that, um, that, that would take a little bit more explanation during the course of the surveys, people know what we're talking about, um, you know, but as far as, you know, the effects of inflation, it's gonna make anything a little more difficult to pass, um, but things still pass, and they do in, in all kinds of economic situations, good, bad, or indifferent, um, and we just see what we keep, I mean, the Capitol residents have generally been pretty open to, to think their city wants what the city needs, and so we measure that and we compare that to previous results, how much need that city has more money and what's, what areas they want to see the money, if there is more money, where it should go, and then try to see if any of these possible tax measures are, uh, palatable to, to the voters that need to be, now, the one thing that, uh, the past sales tax measures have, uh, been fifty percent plus one, I think have changed them, so there is a danger, if you want to make a, a sales tax measure or any measure, but I matter that specifically for one and one, only one purpose, that will then require a two-thirds election, which will make it much more difficult, rather than a general tax that goes to the general fund, but that's, that's the kind of stuff that we find out in the poll.
Yeah, Mr. Bregman, would that bacon home tax be a simple majority, if, if it was not, um, dedicated money?
Uh, you know, I, I don't, I'm not that familiar with that tax, but I assume that it would be, that's just a general tax where the money goes to the general fund.
Yeah, it would be, um, the simple answer about the vote required for a tax is not what type of tax it is, it's where the money goes, so if the money is designated to the general fund, it's the general tax, so if it's a simple majority, if the money is designated, it goes, it's a special tax, and so that requires two-thirds, if this, this may be getting into the weeds, but if the city did decide that it wanted to do a tax measure, it could do it as a general tax, or it only required a simple majority, and then you could also put on the ballot an advisory measure that was decided depending on how to spend the fund.
Yeah, thank you, um, for that, uh, response, um, and, uh, also, Mr. Bregman, um, you sent, you know, I think a lot of residents aren't gonna know what a bacon home tax is, um, can you mention if you would provide, would have to provide some, um, description, uh, in the survey, would you also include scenarios of how that tax would be enforced?
Um, if we have some idea.
So that's, so first off, a couple things, I've done a little bit of research into this, uh, Mr. Mayor, and number one is that people are gonna be, I think the way best described it is a second home tax, I think the bacon home tax is confusing to people. Um, secondarily, I have done a little bit of research into the feasibility of sort of different mechanisms to enforce this, because I think the enforcement, for me at least, was my number one question, uh, was, it didn't seem like a feasible tax to enforce, uh, and according to our initial research, we do think the utility records could be used, uh, to enforce, which I think that, that would actually give a mechanism, credible mechanism about how you'd be doing this, other than just on the honor system.
Thank you for that, um, councilmember Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor Story, this is a question for Jamie, um, so, you know, council may this as a priority without really, uh, without any end goal, end result, like a total amount, and when we're looking at, um, we know where it is, some of the spending, or with our increased costs to retirement, and all, we know kind of some of those things, but I, I'm wondering if you looked at the T O T, and I understand that it is a different type of vote, but we were successful in the last one, and that if we did an X amount of percent, would we get to, would it be enough comparative, comparing it to, say, the second home, um, tax, I'm just wondering, like, if they, would, you know, one of them, you get five million dollars out of, a year out of it, and one you get five hundred dollars, I'm just wondering which one's more effective for what we're trying to accomplish here in taxation.
So, the simple answer is that the second home tax, if, if there's really four hundred units, um, and you use the Oakland eight thousand dollars per year, um, eight thousand dollars times four, I think that's three million dollars, um, one percent of T O T is about two hundred thousand dollars, so they are sort of different orders of magnitude, if you will, so yes, the T O T, uh, one percent T O T is about two hundred thousand dollars, the Oakland bacon home tax, second home tax would be significantly more, obviously, council would have to set what the tax rate is, when we would poll different tax rates and see if that had an impact on, uh, the number of voters.
And, and did you look at, um, in terms of the second home, I mean, we just got some staggering data from the Nicole's on, on who our residents are, and, you know, if these are residents who are local residents with second homes, and they're seniors on fixed incomes, or, you know, I'm just trying to think of, like, the effect really on this type of taxation, have, will we get that information, should we, should we approve going out for this, you know, would we get that kind of data before voting out?
So the first thing, the action tonight would be to just, you know, give guidance about it to poll, um, and, you know, one of the items I didn't mention is, is I'm really looking forward to seeing the poll results on some of our different, uh, community outreach mechanisms, to see what, what's resonating, what people are seeing, using to get information about the city, so that's kind of a side benefit of the poll, is you can ask questions about who's bad, those sorts of things, now, what would come back to you would be the results of the poll, uh, and then in addition, staff would do a whole lot more research into these questions about what are appropriate exemptions, what would this tax look like, how many days per year would a home have to be vacant to be considered a second home, all of those questions, so that information would come back in a package change.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the, the report? Seeing none, I'm gonna quickly go out to the public, um, again, I see no item B, um, just wanna check, Larry confirmed, there's no emails, um, or phone calls.
Mayor Story, we, we have not received an email from the public.
Okay, I'll, um, bring it back to the council then for further deliberation and possible action. Is the councilmember ready to dive in? Yes, Vice Mayor Tyger.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to authorize city manager to enter a contract with Gene Bregman and Associates in the amount to not exceed seventeen thousand dollars for community survey, do the term to keep going to continue, oh, sorry, to gauge public interest on potential ballot measures for the November election, and approve the proposed resolution amending fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget.
I'll start, come on.
So we have a motion and a second, and I'll follow up with councilmember Brown.
Thank you, uh, I guess I have a, a question, or a comment first, and then a question about the motion, um, my comment is I, I have concerns about polling on the utility tax, because we already polled on that last time, and it wasn't favorable, and I, to our city manager's point, I don't expect it'll be favorable this time, a lot of the same pandemic, um, issues that we had, um, when we were starting, because, well, when we polled on it last time, it wasn't very favorable, but I can't remember, was that during pandemic times, or pandemic hasn't started, yeah, it was during pandemic times, right? So, I mean, to the point that we're still virtual, I think it's gonna be difficult for, um, for our residents to say, oh, well, the pandemic's over, so I'm willing to pay it utility tax, even though our council members are still meeting virtually because the pandemic's not over, so I have concerns about polling on that particular tax, and I would hope that we would consider not including that this time around, um, otherwise, I'm, I'm, um, okay with everything else that, that's considered, all the other, um, opportunities and, and considerations, um, I think that, uh, is it possible to pull up, was, was there a slide, I thought there was a slide about the, the optional taxes, no? Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just back.
Yes.
Back up, back up. Sorry, it's not working backwards. The little arrows aren't working well, I will try this way.
Can you go forward until it goes?
I can do this, so I mentioned the second home tax, the idea of like a sales tax, which I suggested is either restricted or for a limited term, for, with an intent around it.
Perfect.
There's the E T, which, yeah, and then other options.
Yeah, if you can go back to the one we pulled up, perfect, so I'm, uh, I'm in favor of polling on the second home tax, um, and, as well as the sales tax, uh, especially the second home tax, because the FAF recommended it, I, I have a lot of, um, faith in, in the finance advisory committee's recommendations, um, yeah, I have concerns about the utility user taxes, even if we weren't to put, um, an advisory measure on the ballot, I would appreciate if we could at least poll to the public, if you had a choice, what would you want this funding to go to, to give us an idea, because even if we don't put it on the ballot, and, and some of these things end up being just a general tax that goes into our general fund, I think it's good to have an idea of what people expect us to use it for, um, it, I, yeah, that's, those are my thoughts on that, um, so, so I know there's already a motion in the second, and I'm wondering if the maker of the motion and the secondary would be willing to amend to just indicate that the utility user tax is not part of the polling this time around, um, based on just my thoughts on this issue. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that, um, that was sort of the impression that I was under after Jamie's presentation, but thank you for clarifying, and that is in line for me, thank you.
Um, I, um, as a secondary, I don't mind, uh, making that change, but I have a question of Gene in regards to, um, this, uh, change on the utility tax, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, councilmember Bertrand.
So I, I thought about the same thing that Kristen talked, talked about recently, and so the conclusion I got was that maybe having various options there, people are thinking in terms of comparison, so I agree, utility tax, we thought was great, but utility rates are going up, I'm on the temptation commission, we definitely, uh, uh, act, um, increase that, and, you know, I got some feedback on that, but it's just the way things are in terms of our climate, so a question to Gene, if, if, if we took utility tax off as proposed, or if we left it on, what do you think in terms of the effect in terms of the public when they see either two or three, you know, the idea of comparison, uh, between two, the idea of comparison between three, which I think is correct, if the third one, utility, is, is not gonna be likable, so I'm just trying to get some ideas, what do you think about that, since you've been doing polling?
It, it's always cleaner to do two than three, for obvious reasons, it is fewer choices, but if, if you, you don't want to poll something that's not a possibility, and you all have indicated here, and actually, when Jamie and I first talked about, uh, doing the poll, uh, two weeks ago, the first thing we agreed upon was, I don't think we should just do the utility tax this time, so, um, I think that's, it's almost kind of a, a moot point to go, is if it's not something that you're gonna consider anyway, uh, then I wouldn't bother asking.
That's still my question, uh, I will second the motion, the amendment motion.
Okay, thank you, any other, um, council, um, comments on the motion? Seeing none, um, just before we think of votes on the motion, um, I think I'll just play in, and I certainly agree that, uh, the utility tax, which is not the focus on to be considering that, um, you know, in this area of inflation, um, and, um, I, I also have serious reservations about the second home or bacon, bacon home tax as well, um, and, um, it, it seems to me that there's already a potential initiative taking place in the city of Santa Cruz on that question, um, I've already had, have certain, you know, significant opposition, uh, developing, uh, toward it, I think it's gonna be a very controversial issue, uh, in the city of Santa Cruz, and, um, and if we were to move forward, uh, in a light manner, I think that we would get, get dragged down, uh, with what's going there now, um, I think the sales tax is kind of the, the poll on is the most palatable tax, and particularly concerning a continuation of the measure F, which is a temporary factor, um, and, uh, scheduled for sunset in, uh, twenty twenty-seven, I mean, with that, this may be a little premature, to poll on that at this time, um, and, um, and so, uh, those are my thoughts, and I would just, uh, I'm gonna support the motion, I think it's always good with surveying the residents, uh, because it's also part of their ambition, uh, how they view the city and other cities too, uh, I think it's good with that effort to get that feedback, um, but, you know, I'll just, you know, when it comes to, to taking a vote on whether or not we're willing to put a second home tax on the ballot, uh, I would probably be most likely a no vote on that, um, question, so, um, those are my comments. So those are my comments. Before I ask for the vote, I'll call on Councilmember Brown.
And I apologize, this might be kind of a silly question. We've had some polling or community outreach before that we had determined was going to happen, and then my phone got a text or a call in the poll or the community outreach. So I just want to clarify ahead of time, should council members be abstaining from participation in these kinds of polls if it was a call or a text?
That would be recommended.
Okay.
Oh, that's a good question, Councilmember Brown. With that, I'll throw a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Brooks.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaiser. Mayor Story.
Hi. The motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to our next item, which is to adopt the resolution declaring an emergency for storm drain repairs in Nobles Park.
But thank you all very much, I'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. And adopt the resolution, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution, one, declaring an emergency, two, authorize procurement and services without giving notice for bid, and also authorize any of the indoor contracts with granite rock, three, approve the budget amendment, transfer in sixty thousand from the emergency reserve fund to the capital improvement fund, and authorize the creation of a new project entitled Nobles Park Storm Drain Project. And Steve, you're going to read it through.
I am. Can you send Mayor and councilmembers on the HR screen? Larry, is that okay?
Yes, it does. Thank you. So the items for you is, the title indicates this consideration of declaring an emergency repair project for a storm drain, storm drain located in Nobles Park. I had mentioned this item in oral communications that are a lot complicating when we first discovered it, but since taken action, repaired it, and then this would be a resolution necessary to proceed with that action. Government a picture is always worth a lot more than words. I prepared this map just to kind of give everybody an idea where the location of the origin is, is Monterey Avenue is going up to Hill toward New Brighton, Bay Avenue is going toward Seal's Bakery. So the green little pipe here is the large Nobles Park pipeline that goes from Nobles Park all the way through the lower parking lot near to SoCal Creek. And then this top little pipeline in red is the pipe that failed, is a fifteen inch corrugated metal pipe for most of its length. It ties in with four other drains here, and all of them connect into the Nobles Park here. The two black dots represent two areas where we've discovered there. The bigger dot is where the pipe was actually broken and severed, and it was the cause of the problems. We also did discover, when we were videotaping it, a small hole by size of a golf ball with a small guy is upstream of that five, about, I think it was eleven or twelve feet. That kind of gives you an idea, you can see we're right next to the sidewalk here, and a lot of people walk through this part of the park. So due to the location of the sinkhole next to the public sidewalk, it's determined that emergency action is warranted. We didn't want the sidewalk down, we didn't want somebody stepping off the sidewalk and into the sinkhole. Granite Rock responded and was able to mobilize within two days, and we did issue them an emergency contract, which is included in your agenda. As far as the repairs number made, work began on March thirtieth, and as that work proceeded on the thirtieth, the depth of the pipe was significantly deeper than anticipated. I quickly go back to the picture, the depth of the pipe that this manhole up here is about four feet below the top of the sidewalk. And we assumed it kind of went at that depth and remained at that depth, because it was somewhere near the pipeline, where in case it would dive down, we know that this looks significantly deeper. But unfortunately, it goes at a constant grade, so it was significantly deeper than Granite Rock had brought equipment for, and we had anticipated. So they halted the first repairs, they filled in the hole, we knew there was nothing there, and we need to keep that excavated again. They started a second repair attempt on April fourth, larger equipment. I have some pictures, and I'll show you that in a minute. The pipe was approximately, the pipe is a bigger break, was approximately sixteen feet deep, and a new pipe was installed to fix both failed areas of the pipe, of the corrugated metal pipe. We are recommending, because we weren't able, we originally thought we might be able to replace the entire pipe, which we've done before, went down the repair project, but due to the depth and the difficulties in working at that depth, we did not continue with replacing the whole pipe. So we're recommending a reinspection of the pipe in the future, probably in the three to five year range, just to make sure that the rest of the pipe that we left behind isn't causing a problem. And there's certainly a candidate for a slip lining project at that time, but further analysis will have to be made. Just to head off the question, we couldn't slip line this project and this project because of the disconnection or complete failure of the pipe without the large dot on the map. Couldn't have ever pulled the pipe through this. We had to get down there and fix up or tear it before we proceeded with any slip lining. So now we can slip line it. So here's some pictures, that's going to give you an idea, this is the equipment sitting above the hole, you can see the pipe down here. In order to put man at that depth, they had to excavate a rather large hole, this was a sixteen foot shield, as they call it, to use for building manholes and accessing the pipes. You can see the pipe down here. That's on the ground. Down below, it was hard to get a picture of the failure, it's just a spike function bud, so I didn't include it here. But you can see here, see fifty pipe, we slipped just the beginning of a new pipe in there to match the size as much as we could at this point, and then in case there was a coupling put in here, and then the whole reconnection was, it was filled with concrete to make it stronger, last a long time. So with that, the budget is complete, and the recommended action tonight is to adopt the resolution to declare some emergency, which authorizes our procurement of services without getting notice or bid, presents public contract code twenty-two zero five zero, authorizes and staff to enter into a contract for such services with granite rock construction for repairs to the storm drain located Nobles Park intersection of Bay Avenue and Monterey Avenue. Resolution also approves a budget amendment, transfers sixty thousand dollars from the emergency reserve fund to the capital improvement fund, and authorize the creation of a new project entitled the Nobles Park Storm Drain Repair Project. And before I answer any questions, I just want the sixty thousand dollars, when we initially thought it was at a much shallower depth, we were in the twenty thousand dollar range. I was actually out of town when the final repairs were done, and I left it with a forty thousand dollar estimate. This is the depth of the pipe kept bringing the project cost up, but we are very comfortable today, we will not exceed the thousand dollar amount with the final billing. We probably won't hear the final billing based on other emergency projects for probably another thirty days. So we can provide a report at that time, either on or off, depending on where we come in at this cost. So that's my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand. You're on mute, Councilmember.
Do drain on the street that's considered city facilities? Yeah, if any of the facilities that drain, street flow are considered city facilities, not identified. You got to just my question, thank you.
Any other questions and compliments? Seeing none, Larry, I don't see any attendees. Did confirm that there's no emails or phone calls?
Mayor Story, I do not see any emails on this topic, and right there are attendees on the front.
Okay, I'll bring it back for a motion, and I'll vote.
A move approval is staff recommendations.
Yeah, the motion by Councilmember Brown, is there a second?
No, sir.
Seconded by Councilmember Bertrand. Chloe, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Brooks.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Hi.
And Mayor Story.
Hi, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Steve, for taking care of that so promptly.
Thank you, Council.
All right. Which will now bring us to item nineteen, which is to consider a section through the municipal code in accordance with Assembly Bill four-eight-one. The action is to introduce for the first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text, and ordinance adding two point six code to the council municipal code approving a military certain use policy for police services. And Captain Dowling, you want to lead us on this item?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmember Brooks. Tonight, I'm presenting a recommendation to move forward with the military funding acquisition of use policy identified as Assembly Bill four-eight-one. Real quick, we're just going to talk a little bit about the purpose of AB four-eight-one, will define what they have determined is military equipment, we'll talk a little bit about our current inventory, the proposed policy, which is policy seven oh six, a little bit about the annual reporting requirements that are going to happen tonight and then hopefully annually, and in coordination with our other jurisdictions, and then the recommendation. So what is AB four-eight-one? It was a simple bill intended to create really transparency and accountability and oversight with the acquisition of use of military equipment. It was offered by a Assembly member of San Francisco that was signed into law in September of twenty twenty-one by Governor Newsom. It took effect January first and must be commenced by May first. Part of this process, we were required to come up with a policy and identify what military equipment, and publish that on our city website. That was done on March thirteenth, it's currently on our city website. And then moving forward, we're looking for approval from the governing body, which is the city council, and establish that policy, having this public hearing, and then to, like I said, we'll submit an annual report. So, like I said, the definition of military equipment is in your packet, it's kind of just summarized a little bit, but it really talks about drones, robots, armored vehicles, a lot of stuff that, quite honestly, the police department doesn't have. So there's fifteen different categories, like I said, they're all listed out in the packet. The current inventory of the Capitol Police Department, really the only thing that we have to disclose is our kinetic energy weapons, which is the less lethal shotgun. We did, out of just really the interest of transparency, added our personal and department-owned rifles, but they're actually not required for AB four-eight-one. We did have a section there talking about the use of allied agency resources, essentially they have to be approved by their body for them to be used within our jurisdiction, and then there's a recording element that goes with that, it's to come back to you promptly. Like I said, the police department doesn't, well, we don't participate in the ten thirty three programs, those are the programs that were designed where they were taking the part nine defense military equipment and kind of reallocating that to local jurisdictions, but we don't participate in any of those programs. Like I said, near the attachment that you have with the proposed ordinance are military use policy and then the actual reading of the AB four-eight-one. Yeah, so like I said, the policy is attached, like I just kind of highlighted, this stuff that's required within the policy, and then if you look to the right of each of the descriptions there, it actually has the policy that you can look at specifically. But it basically covers the definition of what the military equipment is. We have identified a military equipment coordinator and their responsibilities. We've listed in that packet all of the current military equipment that we have, the approval requirements, the complaint process, the annual reporting requirements, and the community engagement, which is part of the tonight's presentation. So that annual reporting, what it does is it basically covers use of the equipment, any complaints that are received, we'll have an internal audit process, the cost of the, any material, if we're getting equipment that we want to purchase for the next, for the coming year. That first report will be due by the next year, twenty twenty-three. And then on the right of the PowerPoint here is just kind of the information that people can send any information or to police chief at ci.capitol.ca.us. You can call our non-emergency number, or let's speak to the military equipment coordinator, or you can also send something in via mail. This is really an important piece of this presentation, is just talking about coordination with other jurisdictions. And essentially, our policy would dictate that in order for us to use or work with other jurisdictions, any of that equipment has to be approved by their body for us to use it, and like I said, then we would have a reporting, come back to the council, let you know, maybe you've actually used that type of equipment. And then one of the things that we did notice, and been reviewing the packet, that there is a correction within the recital in the proposed ordinance, and that we need to, and it's page ninety-two in your packet on item nine D, and we did want to strike the word standing in the district county. So we just want to kind of put that out there. And then tonight, the recommended action is to introduce the first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text, and ordinance adding section two point six zero to the Capitol statute, approving the military equipment use policy for police services, and consider adding section two point six zero to the Capitol statute, approving the military equipment use policy for police services. With that, I have a vote for any questions you have.
Councilmember Bertrand. You're on mute, Councilmember.
Just, yeah, there you go. Didn't push the speed bar well enough. Yeah, I did have a question when you were talking about personal weapons, and, you know, so I'm going to ask that question, so you answer in terms of transparency, so thank you for doing that.
Is there other questions and compliments from Chief Dowling? Seeing none, Chief Dowling, I did have a question concerning the ordinance, and this is subsection F on page ninety-nine of the agenda package. It states that the city council will review the ordinance annually and vote on whether to renew it at a regular meeting. That struck me as a little inconsistent with the requirements of AB four-eight-one. Isn't this required? I mean, would the council have the ability that at some later point, say, we don't want this anymore?
Is it standard, that's something you're prepared to answer, or?
Um, likely not. You know, this is brand new legislation, and so every city across the state is complying with it, and it's possible there are some inconsistencies in it that would be worked out ahead, we proceed. And that's taking me for you.
I guess I'll let some future council grapple with that question, and, yeah, but it seems like that if the council would have a deal with it, not to renew it, you know, maybe to amend it in some fashion, but that just kind of struck me as a little odd. But with that, are there any other questions? Seeing none, and again, on this item, I know that no attendees. Larry, did you just confirm there's no emails or phone calls coming in?
Mayor Story, we have not received any emails on this item.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council then for further deliberation and a potential motion. motion.
A move approval of the recommended action?
It looks like there's maybe a glitch in the recommended action. It looks like perhaps there was like something involving the arrangement of the words. So I, the, I'm trying to take out what it should be. It should be, thank you, introduced for first reading by waiving title only, I'm sorry, introduced for first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text, an ordinance adding section 2.6 of the Capitol Committee Code, approving a military use policy for police services. And that's the end.
Okay. Thanks for that question. So Councilmember Brown, confirm that is your motion?
That is my motion. Thank you.
And you're second to that motion.
I just had a quick question, Mayor Story. Do we need to include that amendment from Chief Dally regarding San Diego to Capitol Park?
Sure.
Yeah, if the city attorney deals with that, then that's there to do, yes.
We can just correct it as a typo more than anything, but I appreciate a diligent motion. So it sounds like we'll be including in the motion with the correction articulated by Chief Dally. Does that work, Councilmember Brooks?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second.
And there's a motion second, and it's been added to the motion that the resolution expressed in the request of county of San Diego. And, no, it's in reference to San Diego. It's talking about working collaboratively with other federal agencies within San Diego County.
Oh, my apologies. Okay.
Yeah. Because what they had there was within San Diego County, which, that would be great to collaborate with San Diego County, but that'd be a bit of a reach. So with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye. And the motion passed unanimously. And thank you, Captain Dally, for keeping us in compliance with state mandates. And so with that, that brings us to an adjournment, and therefore I will adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Council of City Council on April 28th, starting at 7:00 p.m. And until that time, everyone be kind to yourself and be kind to each other, and we'll see you later. Everybody have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Goodbye.